It is six o'clock. Good evening and welcome to the Sandwich School Committee meeting of April ninth, 2025. Members of the public may listen and watch the school committee meeting via live stream at www.sandwichtv.org and the Sandwich Community TV Education Channel Eight. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first item on the agenda tonight is the public forum. Would anyone wish or any folks wish to be heard at public forum? Gather round.
So I'll start off. I'm Shane Hockter. I'm also a member of the Board of Selectmen. Every year we get an invitation to go to the eighth grade civics class of Mr. Duffany. And every year the topics range from, you know, how do we pay for things in town? What does a selectman do? And I'm not going to try and steal too much of the wonderful people behind me's thunder, but this year there was a common theme surrounding, and I won't spoil the surprise for you, but and it was three of the five classes have the same theme. And the questions that we got asked on this topic were, you know, very pointed, very passionate, and very important to all the students at the high school. You know, I have students, you know, as a parent as well at the school, and I'm a firm believer that, you know, good schools are good business, especially for the town. So with that in mind, I'm going to pass the microphone over to the wonderful students behind us. It's always great to go into schools and see what they're doing. This is a great representation of the future of Sandwich. I really, you know, truly believe that. And their engagement with local politics is always a good thing because, you know, on our side of the street, sometimes we don't get to witness it firsthand, but it's really an honor and a pleasure to introduce the eighth grade group behind me. So without that.
If I may, just a little, I know it's a little out of the ordinary. Mr. Hockter visited these classes as a member of the Select Board, as I mentioned, to the school committee at our last meeting. I actually met with them as well as a rep from the school committee.
And I will just clarify that they are here in public forum as opposed to a regular item on the agenda because juggling that many schedules is nigh on impossible. But Mr. Duffany promised me that they will get back at the end of the term when they can report back, so.
Greetings, members of the school committee and Superintendent Marzick. We're in eighth grade civics, we are eighth grade civic students from Mr. Duffany's civics class at Sandwich Middle High School. This spring, our classes have been working on a civic action project where we choose an issue in our community, research it, and are attempting to make change. We are reaching out about the conditions of the athletic field at the school because we feel that they need to be improved. For example, the grass fields are in poor condition, the turf field needs storage and bathrooms, and the baseball field and softball fields need work. We have surveyed members of the school community, and the results show that they agree that the athletic facilities need work. The conditions of our fields and facilities are a reflection of our school. We want to be able to take pride in our field as we compete against other schools. Some of the fields are not even suitable for practicing on and can be dangerous for our athletes.
We often visit other schools and see better facilities and fields. We want this for our school. Please consider adding money to the budget in the future to improve our athletic fields and facilities. We had numerous guests speaking and interviewed the athletic director and the lacrosse coach, and they agreed that the fields and facilities needs work. Again, please consider investing in the future of our schools by making our athletic facilities something to be proud of. We would like to thank the following people for coming out and to speak with our class and answer our questions. Mr. Dunham, Mr. Searle, Mr. Hockter, Mr. McNeil. Thank you for your time and consideration of this matter. Sincerely, SMHS eighth grade civic students.
Does anybody else wish to say anything on this topic? And could we have a copy of the statement for our note taker? That would be great. Thank you for Lisa and to sign in, Mr. Duffany for the group. Thank you very much. Well, good luck with your project, and we look forward to hearing more about it at the end. Maybe we'll have a positive response. That would be great. Thank you. Would anyone else wish to be heard at public forum? Yes. If you would, did you sign in? Thank you.
While she's signing, and we, because of open meeting law and the way it works, we are not allowed to specifically address the concerns raised. I just want to say thank you for coming out. It is great to see students come to a meeting like this.
Hello. They did a very nice job. My name's Sarah Lavoy. I'm a mom of two children in the district. We spoke earlier, we emailed back and forth earlier. I just wanted to throw out the possibility of having a conversation about whether or not Wednesday PD day, the early release day, is still the best fit for our community. I know many of the parents that I speak to who have young children who attend the Wednesday extended day. It's a long day for kids, and it's in the middle of the workday, and I'm just wondering if it's still fitting the community. Couple of concerns that I've had brought to my attention, that I've had conversations with people about are that supervision for younger kids. If they're not at extended day, maybe parents work from home. If they're at home, they're often on screens more to keep them occupied. It can be a long afternoon, and it's in the middle of the workday for parents. The extended day is a large group of children on Wednesdays primarily because of this. There's a delay between the end of the high school day and the start of the sports and the afternoon activities that I'm not sure how that's addressed at the high school level, but I know that that's, you know, another concern. And we were looking at meaningful PD in one hour. I'm a teacher in another district, and our PD days are often half-days, and we get a lot done in those four or five hours. It's a, it's a good opportunity to have consultants come in. It's just a nice, to have that extended amount of time to work on one project for an extended amount of time can be really beneficial. Also, Wednesdays are not available for after-school help for teachers and clubs if they're at the PD in the afternoon. Couple of proposed solutions are swapping it to mornings where it's not in the middle of the workday, returning to a half-day or a full-day PD less frequently. Yeah, and/or keeping the way it is. But I would love to see if there's a possibility of opening up to maybe a survey for the community to see if it's still the best fit. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for coming tonight. Does anyone else wish to be heard at public forum? Seeing no one, we'll close the public forum and move on with our agenda. The first, next item would have been a discussion with Representative Stephen Zarros and Senator Dylan Fernandez, but they are unable to make the meeting tonight, so we will postpone that portion unless you want to make some comment.
No, that is correct. Yesterday, Senator Dylan Fernandez notified me that a meeting of the Senate Ways and Means Committee, which he is a member, was called for this evening, and Representative Zarros had a late afternoon meeting to talk, to discuss earmarks. So unfortunately, he could not make it. We're tentatively looking at rescheduling both of them for May 14th.
Okay, so the next item is review and act on the meeting minutes of the regular business meeting dated March 26, 2025. Can I have a motion to approve?
I move that we approve the minutes of our business meeting of March 26, 2025 as presented.
Motion made by Kevin, seconded by Bert. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Seven, zero, zero. It passes. Moving on to review, no, we've got that correspondence. The only correspondence I had was to convey what Sarah talked about, and so we've covered that. Any other correspondence or announcements? Moving on, superintendent's update.
All right. Good evening again, everybody. Just a couple items. First off, and it's been reported in our local media, last week we received word about two of our administrators. Oak Ridge's principal, Trish Hill, last week was appointed by the Mashpee School Committee as the new Assistant Superintendent of Schools in Mashpee. And our Assistant Finance Director and really our Human Resources Director, Monica De La Hoya, has been hired as Mashpee's new business manager. So, you know, we will miss Trish and Monica a great deal, and we thank them for their many years of service to the Sandwich Public Schools, but also congratulate them on taking on these new challenges in their own careers. So as far as it stands here, as of today, we posted both positions on websites like School Spring, and we will be conducting a comprehensive search, particularly for the Oak Ridge principal position involving parents, community members, and staff members of the Oak Ridge community with the hope of having a replacement probably by mid to late May. Any questions on any of that?
Do you include the union in that committee?
Yes, absolutely. The second item of interest, and I think we will probably do a deeper dive on this, and this has been discussed extensively at the District Safety Team meeting, is something known as the C-stag, which stands for Comprehensive School Threat Assessment Guidelines. We did a pretty comprehensive training all day Friday, March 28th, involving some real key folks within our district. We actually shared a little bit, and we had some folks from Dennis Yarmouth Regional in District. And what the C-stag is really all about is about threat assessment. Unfortunately, we've had instances, particularly in the first couple of weeks of school, where threats were made by students. And unfortunately, oftentimes, a lot of this stuff takes a life of its own on social media, and it becomes exacerbated and so on. What the C-stag process is all about is having a multidisciplinary approach using, partnering with public safety, partnering with the mental health professionals that are in the building, with the administrators in the building in making, going through a distinct protocol to ascertain whether a threat is transient or substantive in nature, and what are the preventive steps that can be taken, but what are also the resources for a student and his or her family? So I think we had the great pleasure of having a Dr. Shermilla Meta, who is from Harvard and also the Cambridge Health Alliance, Harvard's Department of Psychiatry, really conduct this training that I think will be valuable again at tomorrow's District Safety Team. We will kind of talk a little bit more as far as the next steps and how we standardize the C-stag protocol within our district. But I do think that that is significant professional development and is important for our district because unfortunately, we're not unique, and many other districts and schools have had to deal with these types of scenarios.
Joe, I thought, I found the article particularly helpful as giving a pretty comprehensive snapshot of what the program is and its significant impact on reducing the number of students that are disciplined, the number of students that are somehow prevented from attending school for a period of time, and that it is a really key monitoring piece. I was wondering if that article could be somehow made public in some of your.
Absolutely. And, believe it or not, the folks from the University of Virginia where this protocol was developed very much advocate to be very, very public and transparent about the protocol, to actually have links or a section of your district website where you talk about it and so on. And I think that article is a perfect snapshot that describes threat assessment and the process. And to your point, Sue, about the preventative pieces, about, say you do have a student that has, is making a transient threat, what are the measures that you're going to put in place to support him or her so it doesn't go farther down the line, so to speak? So, absolutely. And then my third piece, I'll turn things over to Michelle, who has an update on the current FY25 budget, and then also a request for three different budget transfers.
You have the March report in front of you. A couple of things to note in this report. I reworked the utilities as Mr. Searle had asked last time, and really was no help. We're seeing that the gas bills are kind of out of control now, so now some of the codes are in the negative. I also reworked athletics stipends and his transportation, estimating what his transportation will be to the end of the year. He will be over again on the stipends, but he has plenty of money left in athletic transportation. So that's one of the budget transfers we're going to discuss in a moment. And the final thing, the new copier leases are now in place, so I want to move the rest of the supply money that we won't need into the lease codes to cover the new leases. So those are the areas that have been updated. We're still in really good shape. We're in the black, and we have like $400,000 more circuit breaker to use, so we have like $800,000 still open right now if the circuit breaker was in place.
Just to that utility comment, or that utility line, it shows a balance of 2,200 bucks for the rest of the year. I assume that the encumbered includes estimates for the rest of the year?
Mm-hmm. Yes, it does.
See how that shakes out? Let's see how that shakes out when it wakes up at 32 degrees in April.
Yeah, no, no kidding. We'll never be able to turn the boilers off.
I think the intent is May 1 is the magic date for turn off of boilers.
We hope, which is kind of late.
We're hoping for 70 degrees.
Yeah. Hopes and dreams. So we move on to the budget transfers. And the first transfer is to reclassify general teaching salaries, the extra money that's in that code, into specialist code, extracurricular code, and professional development codes just to cover negatives and to provide extra money for extracurricular club stipends that Trish wants to hold for the spring. The second transfer is, like I told you, moving copier supply codes into the lease codes to cover the new leases. And the third transfer is to transfer extra athletic transportation monies into the coaching athletic stipend code.
So the good news is last year, transportation kind of caused us some overage in that area, but this year that is being used to offset contractual increases in stipends. Good.
That's exactly correct. And keep in mind, there's a lot of pieces to the puzzle, and last year's overages in athletic transportation were directly tied to our successes. And think about the number of tournament teams versus this year. So happy and, happy from the financial, but sad from the competitive perspective, but also covering those stipends really kind of, again, speaks to what really we want, participation rates, and being able to run freshman sports and middle school sports and so on. So that's good coverage. And again, I do want to, that first budget transfer really kind of speaks to the middle school, I'm sorry, the Oak Ridge club situation where allocating 15,000 to cover stipends for third trimester spring clubs, I think is very worthwhile and is really successful.
I know, what was still on the budget, I know that we had prepared to talk about some of the legislative key points, talking points with our legislators here, but since we're in the budget matter right now, could you just, just really for reporting purposes and for minutes purposes, just summarize in a thumbnail the key points that you put into that memo?
Sure. One of the key things that is for under consideration, so keep in mind, it's the Budget 101. Right now, all we have in place is what is referred to as the House One Budget, which is the governor's budget, which was released on the last Wednesday of January. Our key piece is known as Chapter 70 Funding. We are one of about 70% of districts across the Commonwealth that are considered to be a minimum aid district based upon the relative wealth of our community. In the governor's budget for Chapter 70, we are looking at an additional $75 per student, which roughly comes out to be $162,000 additional in state funding. With something like that, obviously, the preponderance of any increase in our budget has to come from our town. One of the proposals, so keep in mind, the month of April is generally considered to be the House does their deliberations of the budget, and then the May is the Senate, and then Conference Committee is in June. One of the House budget proposals would be to increase the minimum aid, aid to $150 per pupil, which would obviously double and put us somewhere in about the $320,000 additional. Keep in mind that the budget that was approved by this committee and will go to town meeting in May has completely flat Chapter 70. So per what was done this fiscal year and what would be my recommendation to this committee would be any increase to Chapter 70 to be reinvested into our facilities. Another piece that is under proposal, particularly with the excess FY23 and FY24 Fair Share Amendment, otherwise known as the Millionaire's Tax, the 1.3 billion, would be to allocate circuit breaker funding to a 90% reimbursement rate versus the 75% reimbursement rate. So it's actually a little bit of a complex formula. We really, keep in mind, circuit breaker is for our out-of-district special education tuitions for students with our most significant needs. Realize in out-of-district tuition, we put about approximately $2 million. So increasing that reimbursement for, from 75% to 90% would be also a significant piece. So I think those are two very, very pragmatic things. We are not, unfortunately, a Student Opportunity Act district, so that really the state funding pieces are limited for us.
Thank you.
I have a quick question. What is our reimbursement rate this year? Is it 104 per student? Is that what?
I believe it is, yes.
104. So if it increases, it would be up to 150 per student?
It would be doubling what is in the governor's budget. And traditionally, because the revenue projections are better in April versus May, in some good economic years, as the budget has progressed through the House and then Senate and then Conference Committee, that Chapter 70 minimum aid per pupil has increased. But we also had really tough years where it was 20 bucks per pupil, and it stayed 20 bucks per pupil. So I do think the opening salvo of 75 dollars per student is positive, but we shall see, you know, with kind of the uncertainty that we're facing right now.
Thank you.
So sort of related, budget finances related. So the Department of Education recently sent out to Massachusetts, to all schools, right, the requirement to certify compliance under Title VI with some pretty vague but specific threats to withhold funding to school districts that don't comply with some very specific, but also vague, conditions regarding.
Around DEI programming?
DEI. And I know as a state, we're kind of in limbo and on hold, but the deadline to sign looming, where do we stand on that? What, are we kind of waiting to hear from attorneys, from?
Yeah, my understanding is, first off, I think on Monday we were sure you've worded that the deadline was extended till April 24th. It's also my understanding that our state attorney general is looking at it for the simple reason that that, signing off on that affidavit would be directly contradictory to state law, thinking about, you know, one of the things in receiving Student Opportunity Act money would be the requirement that you have some type of DEIB structure, committee, coordinators, et cetera, in your district. So obviously, that's completely at odds at this mandate. So I have yet to receive any guidance from our acting commissioner, but I anticipate receiving that.
Thank you. Okay.
And that's all I got.
Questions for Joe? Okay.
We do need to vote on the transfers, though.
Yeah.
Right. I do have one more. Regarding the $15,000 transfer for the clubs at Oak Ridge, my understanding is that the clubs are supposed to be self-funding or self-sustaining?
Not the stipends, not the stipends for the teachers. The students will raise money within a club. Now, at an elementary level, it's not the same as the high school. The elementary level, it's more like an account that, you know, funds like field trips and things like that, and that's fine with the auditors. We handle and cover the stipends. They collect, they do collect a little bit of money, and that does go towards some of their stipends. But she's run three different sessions of student clubs, and she's, they've been very popular this year, and she's run out of money, so she needs more to keep it going because the kids just love the clubs.
No, which is awesome, and I do believe in support clubs. I'm just wondering about, as we talk about things like athletic fees and other fees for participation, is there, is there more of an expectation that, that there be a greater contribution? So if you've got, if you can participate, I think it's an unlimited fee, right? $35 and you can participate in all the clubs you want?
I think we need to look at all of it, the high school and the elementary, and if Trish is going to be running these kind of clubs, or Oak Ridge, I should say, then we need to align it more with the high school and run one club all year instead of three different sessions where you're paying three different stipends and things like that. So if you run one club, you know, as one stipend.
We're looking more specifically about, because again, $15,000, while we can say, yeah, that's something we can absorb in a budget, like is it, if it's a going recurring expense, there should be a.
Right. If she's going, if they're going to have a large student activity, you know, running there, then we. there, then we need to look at it and try to rework it more like the high school.
Okay. Thank you.
If I may, Budget Subcommittee looked at this. We never came to a final recommendation for the full committee, but we looked at, you know, the athletic fee, which is $150, hasn't changed in 15 years. We did a comparison with other towns, some charge more. I'm not looking, you know, in a perfect world, we would fully fund it, but that's not the world we live in. Some charge have tiers, so certain sports cost a little extra because hockey is more expensive than, say, cross-country and things like that. So what I was, thank you for teeing it up. I was actually going to mention, I think, I don't think we'll get it with this committee before the election, because we only have one meeting left, but very quickly after the new committee, because that's actually something we should be doing every year anyway, is voting on what those fees are, kind of like the Select Board, you know, votes on your beach pass. That's something we should publicly do. So I think I can get with the Chair and we can look at putting something very quickly on the agenda for May for the Budget Committee to look at it, maybe bring up a proposal to the full committee, so we could do that before the end of the fiscal year.
And I think we've talked about, particularly at the elementary through grade six, after-school activities provide extended supervision for young children at the end of the day. In common parlance, that's childcare.
By proxy.
So how we treat K through six and how athletics and whatnot work at seven through 12 are a bit different. So, I mean, we could just add and add and add, and pretty soon, every kid in K through six could have someplace to go until 3:30, whatever the time happens to be. So I think we have to look at the programs at both areas and what its intended purpose is and what the expense is and how to meet somewhere in the meeting.
We actually did a breakdown. Sean Dunn was very helpful of looking at like what it costs per sport. Some sports are more expensive than others, obviously, you think hockey, football. And I actually, I know I use cross-country as an example, that's probably was not a good one because there's a lower participation rate, so that stipend is apportioned out over a smaller number of kids, if you will. So there's a lot of moving parts to it, but I think it definitely is something we need to look at. With that, I will move that we approve the budget transfers as presented.
Second by Bert, motion made by Kevin. Any further discussion of the transfers?
Yes, just real quickly, in other forums, in other locations, there's been, there's been past comments about how the schools may or may not have been moving funds from one spot to another. This is an example of, we don't, and when we do, we do it publicly and we vote on it. That's all.
Okay. So all in favor of the transfers say aye.
Aye.
Looks like 700, it passes, thank you, into old business, transfer of defunct student activity fund, club funds.
Okay, so this is another transfer, but this one's a little bit more interesting. And it is kind of funny because from 4:30 on, the Policy Subcommittee had another fascinating meeting, and the whole issue of student activity accounts came up. And I believe this came before the committee, maybe a year, a year and a half ago, to kind of update it. And we actually have a provision that says what should be done if you have a defunct, a class that already graduated, that money should be allocated to existing classes. So we have a situation, and I think it's in your handout, going back to the class of 1998. Okay, so we're talking, what, 27 years ago? These are kiddos now that are 45. We've been sitting on money and actually, per our policy, and then also the town auditors would like to see those defunct accounts cleaned out and transferred to our existing classes. So there's a ton of ways to do this, and kind of an internal discussion, but a discussion with Jeannie, we thought an equitable way would be to take a look at the six classes that are at the middle high school and disperse it 20%. The grand total of all those defunct classes is, I believe, $31,087.05, and to disperse it 20% for each of the high school classes, grades nine, 10, 11, and 12, and 10% to the two middle school classes. So as a result, each of our high school classes will receive $6,217.40, and the two middle school classes will receive $3,108.70 each.
Excuse me. Why not equitably, equi, whatever that word is?
Equitably? Yes. Like split it six ways even?
Yeah, that's what, that's what I would be in favor of.
Sure. Great question. It could definitely be done that way. I think the mindset was just thinking about the seventh and eighth graders will be there longer, and they have more of an opportunity to fundraise and so on and so forth versus, say, the juniors or the seniors. Honestly, I don't feel super passionate about it, splitting it, what would it be, 16.67% each way versus this 2020, 2020, and 1010?
I mean, I kind of like the model because it also allows those seventh and eighth graders, they may benefit from current ninth through 12th graders handing down additional money.
Sure.
But also, the grade 12 has two months left.
Yep.
And they have a lot of expenses up.
Prom times rolling around.
Do you see the calendar, the senior calendar?
Senior week costs a lot of money.
Lots of money.
Cruise costs thousands of dollars.
I know, my own, I don't really have a big issue with this. Is there any caveat, I have to, forgive me for not having memorized that policy. Do we make any effort to reach out to these classes? Because they did raise the money that they could, you know, create their own account that, you know.
That's a no-no according to our policy. So there are some districts, honestly, that say, hey, you know.
Class prez.
Class prez, class of '05, your 20-year reunion is coming up. Do you want to have, you know, that is violative of our policy. But I think that, not to speak for them, but I think the town auditors would very much frown on that practice of having to release those funds and then a private account being formed and so on.
So these monies are not appropriated, they're all raised by the classes?
They were raised by the students.
And to be honest with you, if you go through the list, okay, I'm really not so worried about the 45-year-olds and the class of 98, because you're talking $574, but you probably also don't need to be a rocket scientist to take a look at the largest class, the class of 20. Guess what happened then? And as a result, so many of their funds were not expended because those poor kiddos, I'm assuming, did not have a prom, did not have, did not have the senior week activities and so on.
Went great for 2021 because they ran negative.
Need to bring them back.
So what about the classes that, at graduation, announce what their class gift is going to be? Is this all taken into account to 2023 too?
Is it all leftover after-class?
After-class gifts, because I'm looking at the class of 2023, it's $8,200 still. Okay. All right.
Well, I would imagine they make their decision about the gift in years where maybe all their bills aren't in.
Right.
So they don't know what they have left at the point that they leave us.
Yeah, and sometimes all the bills aren't paid until after they're gone.
They're gone.
That'd be my last question, is when does, when would we sweep this, like for the class of 25? If they have money left over in the checking account?
I'm having a meeting with the class advisors of all these classes on Friday, and Jeannie and I are going to go over what exactly to do, and if you have money left over, you are to bequeath it to the next class instead of letting it sit there. If you want to get class gifts, buy the class gift. If you want to get a school gift, do that. But when all of that is said and done, if you have a couple hundred dollars left, you are to gift it to the next class.
So we won't be in this.
We won't be in this situation.
We won't do that anymore. So we would come up with what is a reasonable date specific where you would make that change?
Yes, and the advisors have to start being, you know, proactive with this in conjunction with the principal, because the principal controls the account, so.
Wow. Can we just, can we get a motion and then we could continue the discussion if there's need to do that, Bert?
You're probably not going to like my motion, but if it were up to me, I would turn it upside down, but I would like to, considering that probably will never pass, I'll put this out, that the funds be distributed equitably. I got it, to all the classes at the high school and the junior high school, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, and 12.
By equitably, we don't mean equal. Do you mean?
Yeah, I do mean equal.
And I think you need to say equal.
Okay. My motion is that the funds be distributed equally to all the classes and, because the, for example, the class of 25 pretty much has their money raised, and this would, you know, they might be looking, they might be trying to figure out, how are we going to spend all this, all this money, whereas the seventh grade could use a little bit of a boost, so that's my motion.
The motion on the floor is to take the .31087.05 and distribute it equally from, I guess.
All six classes.
All six classes. We have a second?
I'll second.
All right, there's a second. Any further discussion of equal distribution of the remaining funds?
Did the quick math, thanks to my calculator on my phone, that equates to $5,181 per class. So it's just under $1,000 less for the high school classes, but it's a $2,000 bump for the middle school, which makes sense if you look at it.
With that little data point, any further discussion?
It's free money for all of them.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. I see six yes, one opposed, no abstentions, it carries. Thank you.
Bert, middle schoolers love you.
All right. Other topics not reasonably anticipated by the Chair? I don't have any. Does anyone have any? All right, moving on, we will welcome Mary-Kate Lott, the Chair of the CPAC, to provide an update on our Special Education, is it Action Committee?
Advisory.
Advisory.
Well, it's action, too, so, okay. Welcome.
Okay. I have a handout that I'm going to pass around. Thank you for having me here this evening to give an update on the CPAC. Again, my name is Mary-Kate Lott, I'm the Chair of the CPAC. You know, anytime I have an opportunity to plug the CPAC, I like to do so. So some of the info on the second page may be repetitive from the last time that I was here to give an update, but I believe it's important to keep spreading the word about the CPAC. So what is the CPAC's role? The Special Education Parent Advisory Council plays a crucial role in fostering collaboration between families and schools to enhance special education services. As a parent-driven group, CPAC serves as a voice by advocating for the needs and rights of students with disabilities. The council provides a platform for parents to share experiences, offer support, discuss concerns and difficulties, and share achievements regarding their children's education. By working closely with school administrators in the district's school committee, CPAC helps to identify areas for improvement, contribute to the development of effective programs, and promote inclusive practices within the educational system. Additionally, CPAC often organizes workshops, informal get-togethers, and informational sessions to empower parents with knowledge and resources, ultimately aiming to create a more supportive and equitable learning environment for all students. So what have we been up to? Some highlights and happenings for the 2024-2025 school year. CPAC representatives began meeting regularly with District Administrator Director of Pupil Services BJ McNamara and School Committee Liaison Danielle Benenda. Within the first few weeks of school, we engaged in meaningful conversations centered on special education and student experiences within the Sandwich Public Schools. Much of this work focused on increasing inclusion experiences for our students and bringing educational opportunities to our families. These meetings have been ongoing throughout the school year. And I'd like to thank BJ and Danielle for their continued support and collaboration. Their guidance and insight is so much appreciated and valued. Thank you. Turning to the next page, we hosted, back in August, we hosted an ice cream outing of CPAC families to kick off the 2024-2025 school year. We've held two general meetings, and a third meeting will be held at the end of May. Topics and discussions included but not limited to updates on special education programs, co-teaching, the new diploma requirements, the new IEP form that came out, extended school year schedule, new special education parent portal through Power School, special education law and the sharing of local and state resources. We held a training, a basic rights workshop with Christine Riley from Cape Cod Advocates. We discussed the rights of students and guardians under special education law and reviewed the new IEP form. We also joined back in January, Upper Cape Tech CPAC for a training focused on transition, which was preparing students with disabilities for life after high school. The workshop was presented by the Department of Developmental Services, Family Resource Center, the Cape Organization for the Rights of the Disabled, and MassAbility. We were also invited to a workshop hosted by the Federation for Children with Special Needs in the Kennedy Donovan Center. They presented on the Caregiver to Caregiver Respite Network. Just recently, back in March, we held an informal meeting, coffee and conversation at Cafe Chu. It was a small group of us, but I must say, it was positive and productive, and connections were certainly made. I should also note, it's not on here, but the CPAC was one of the focus groups for the strategic planning that is taking place in the district right now.
And that was well-attended, too.
Yes.
Our strategic planning meeting.
Yes, it was.
It was great.
Yep, it was great. Goals for 2025-2026, continue the collaboration and partnership with the school committee and school administration, continue to meet regularly to understand and discuss the special education needs of students in the district, continue to facilitate communication, promote understanding, build partnerships, provide information, empower parents, encourage involvement, and create a supportive community. We've talked about this next item, we've talked about this before, and it's developing a logo for the Sandwich CPAC. Right now, we really don't have one, and it would be to promote awareness and recognition. And we had spoke about it briefly before in one of our meetings on maybe getting one of the art students or a few art students to come up with some ideas for us for a logo. And hold workshops based on parents' interests. Some examples include, but not limited to, executive functioning strategies for creating successful students, and understanding your child's anxiety and collaborating with your school. and understanding your child's anxiety and collaborating with your school to support them. And our next meeting will be taking place May 27 at 6:30 PM. It will be a virtual general meeting. The agenda will include transitioning from school to school, any special education updates, ESY, extended school year reminders and updates before the summer, and looking ahead to the next school year. All are welcome. We'd love to have anybody and all attend. And that is my update. Thank you.
Questions or comments from Ms. Lott?
Just a comment. Thank you so much for all of the time that you dedicate to the CPAC.
Oh, you're welcome. Thank you. My pleasure.
We want, we want people to attend. We're here. The CPAC is always, since our kids were preschool.
Yes.
We've been involved with the CPAC, and you don't always get the attendance. But just, just for parents and families to know that we are here available to help.
Yes.
You, you know, have a coffee and listen to your concerns and see how we can help, so. It's really vitally important work that you're doing.
Yeah, thank you. My pleasure, my pleasure. And I can always be reached at our email, which is cpacsandwich@gmail.com at any time. We do have a Facebook page. You can find us under Sandwich CPAC.
We're, we're ending one year with the new process, new forms, new whatever. Just in big picture, what are you hearing from parents in terms of their impressions of how that's being implemented? And how our kids are doing?
The new, the new IEP form?
Yeah.
Yeah. There's been a positive, there's been positive feedback with the new IEP form. I feel it's user-friendly, it involves the parents and the students more. It's really focused on the, the skills the students have. It's, yeah, so it's been positive. I think it's a good, good change.
Without all the fancy data to go with it. But general impressions and perceptions are usually pretty close to the mark.
Yes.
And they've reformulated it. So at the beginning of the IP, it's what are your child's strengths? What is, what are their capabilities? What can they do? So that's been really helpful.
That's great, yeah, thank you.
Any other comments or questions?
Just comment and question. Thank you for everything you're doing and the support you provide. Is there something that would help people understand what they get out of these experiences? That might be like, I'm not really sure if I should go or if this is going to help me. I think I know the answer, but for people listening, they might not know.
I think what they could do is attend to see what it's all about. I mean, explaining what's here. I mean, we do have formal, and I'm trying to do more informal with doing the coffee and just connection and just having easy conversations. But we're here as a support, so.
Yeah, and people can reach out with an email to you if they had questions?
Absolutely, anytime. Yep, yep, and I will get back to them. And I've even met with families one-on-one. Doesn't have to be in a group setting or a meeting setting. I am open to meeting with the families one-on-one as well. Parents, guardians, whoever.
We have a copy of this electronically, so it will be part of our minutes for this.
Sure, yes, I do.
Thank you.
Yes.
I'll just say thank you for all that you do. Is there anything you need from us?
Um.
Free shot.
Body. Well, let me see, let me take a look. No. Continue the collaboration, continue getting the word out. Keep an open mind, listening ear. That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Thank you for having me.
The young people as well, for working so hard. Thank you. Other topics not reasonably anticipated by the chair? I don't, still don't have any.
Well done.
Anything there? Okay, moving along. Subcommittee reports. DEIB Subcommittee, Tracy.
Okay, so we had a meeting and talked about a whole bunch of different things. One thing that will be happening on May 8 here at 6 o'clock, I believe. Information will be coming out. But it is a viewing of a documentary and partnering up with the Upstander Project. So it will be a documentary. The Upstander Project focuses a lot on sharing stories that are oftentimes not told when we're thinking about history of people and, and experiences. So it will be documentary as well as a discussion after. So that's a community event, which I am really looking forward to, and will be a great opportunity for people to come out. The professional development continues on cultural responsiveness, and the feedback has been really positive. We had a conversation about the importance of language that we're using as a district when it comes to belonging and how we can continue to welcome families and students and continue to provide a place where everyone feels welcomed. That includes surveys and gathering information and continuing to have conversations about how to continue to make things better. BJ McNamara and some families and staff are taking the lead on looking at bullying policy and looking at all the language involved. So there's consistency everywhere around the district, so that is happening. What else do I have here? One other thing, and I'm not sure if there's any updates, but looking at some glitches that were happening with the Smore software for low-vision individuals. And so that's being looked into, different softwares, so that that problem can be resolved. And I think that's it.
Sue or Kaylee, anything to add?
Any comments or questions?
Okay.
Thank you, Tracy.
Sure.
To the Subcommittee, Policy Subcommittee.
I really, really, really wanted to finish the review of the policy manual tonight, alas. Even an extra half an hour, we didn't get it done, but I pledged to try to get it done before I depart the committee. We are just about through Section J. And K and L are really brief, but we'll keep plugging along. So hopefully, we won't, we don't have anything to present for review tonight. And unless I can coerce my fellow members to meet one more time before our next meeting, I'm not sure we will before I depart.
And you'll incorporate, or at least in your discussion, the chief nurse, Nicole, is?
I had, I had hoped that that was on our list of things tonight. We didn't quite get there, but yes, medication issues. There's a lot of updates. So the bottom line is there are a lot of policies that have been significantly updated through mask over the past few years that we really needed to do a lot of updating, so.
As she points out in her email, that this is the time of year where students are out of the building doing lots of field trips.
Absolutely.
Be problematic.
Absolutely.
Important to have that updated. Thank you.
I would just add that we did, you know, as part of our, you know, we did review, I'm not sure how many, 25, 30 of them, that I think we've, hopefully, we can put forth to the full committee at the next meeting before, under this.
Yes.
School Committee before the next election, rather than have to bring somebody up to speed. I think would be in our best interest. So that's a future agenda item, I guess. Ahead of myself.
Thanks to the, thanks to the Policy Subcommittee and for Christine's leadership. I'm going to miss you.
Thank you.
Is she allowed to leave without finishing the policy?
I don't know, I guess so. All right, next item, Liaison Advisory Committee reports. None? Warrants.
I move that we approve the warrants as presented and signed by a majority of the school committee.
Second by Bert, motion made by Kevin. Any discussion of the warrants? All in favor?
Aye.
700, it passed, thank you. Future agenda items. Danielle?
Second public, yes.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Oops, sorry. Jumped ahead.
Sorry. Public forum. Does anybody wish to be heard at public forum?
No, JT doesn't want to.
Charlie's shy tonight.
JT's too quiet tonight, now he doesn't want to.
Now we can do future agenda items.
I just had one. Where are we with the Golden Apple Award? Were we going to address that in May, perhaps?
No, I think at the last meeting in the superintendent's report, I put together a timeline. And I think what we were shooting for is during that last meeting of May, May 28, to present it.
So refresh my memory, when do those nominations go out, or have they gone out?
They have not gone out. Tentatively, they will go out right around May 1, with the intent around the middle of May, May 14th, May 15th, that the committee could deliberate on the nominations and so on.
Do we have a, are we doing this as a committee of the whole? Or is there a key group that will cull through those wonderful nominations?
It is a, it was a Subcommittee, because otherwise we'd have to do it in public, in public session.
Yeah, it was ad hoc.
Okay, so time is getting, so I think we should identify the committee.
I, I wonder if, as opposed to having a committee, if everyone reviews the nominations and then votes by Google Form?
Can't.
And we're all deliberating.
It'd be a violation of open meeting law. We, we did that once before, you can't do it.
So even if there's no, there's no cross, you don't see everyone?
Share that one in this new work.
Okay.
So.
We tried that once.
Yeah, I don't know. Did we use an electronic form to, because I believe there were criteria and then a place for comments?
What I submitted last year was you got in advance all of the nominations as a very, very large PDF file.
Yep.
And then a rubric that you used to assess them. And then also kind of a statistical piece of per school, how many people were nominated and the number of nominations per person. The actual processing and deliberation was done live in person.
True, but could we, is it possible or feasible to do some type of simple survey with the rubric, with a LikeArt kind of scale, so that?
I'm thinking the same way we do the superintendent's evaluation, right? We each complete our information separately, and then it gets delivered to one person.
It could be done as long as there's no deliberation. It could be another data set, a data set that you have in advance, so that when you do meet in person, you have that data set to deliberate upon.
So it could, would be anonymous? It would go to, or maybe it doesn't, I don't care if it's anonymous or not. Those individual forms with aggregated results could go to the committee. They would go through them and add, subtract, whatever. And then when we get to the full committee, we have that data and we, in advance of the meeting, and we can make our choices publicly. Would that be possible? It's just, it really is to, there were a lot of them last year, and we're talking about a two-week turnaround, that's.
I think it was something like 20, 120, 130.
Yeah, it was, and to do them justice, I guess.
So no, no even Google Form, different from a Google Sheet? So this is like a survey where you're only, you're not seeing other, and it would go to one chair, one person. It would go to Sue, for example. You're the only one who can see the results.
I wasn't thinking, I was just thinking of ease of dealing with 100 some odd that everyone translate their.
Choose their top.
Turn the rubric into a LikeArt style, just like the superintendent's, with an area for comments. It just forces us to look at all of them in the same way.
Right.
And then you've got the comments to refer to, or.
We have a little time before May, we can figure this out.
Let's think about it a little bit more, but that process was onerous. And you won't be here, I've been looking at Christine, but.
I'll be watching.
I think it was an, not that, it was a wonderfully rewarding process, reading all those incredible nominations, but to turn that much information around and do justice to every one of those, if we could cull the information in a way, so when the committee and the full committee is deliberating.
I think what we did last time, I'm just reading back. We, we called through everything, and then we picked our top three and discussed it at a Subcommittee of who had the most nominations and what touched them.
Whatever criteria you came up with, great.
I'm going to, I'm going to.
Finalize that.
I'm going to geek out a little bit. It was an ad hoc committee, because it was not a Subcommittee. That actually had to be public.
That's correct.
You are correct.
And I would just, I would, I think that process worked. I would, I would recommend we not, we did not vote on them as a full committee. They came to us approved, if I'm not mistaken. Because I don't, I would, I would not want to deliberate something like that in public session.
Whatever we did, I don't remember what.
Yeah, we did. I'm looking back from May of last year.
I know what you mean, yeah.
And keep in mind, I believe last year I gave everybody a summary. You had the hard copies of the actual nominations, but I gave everybody a summary of per school, all of the folks that were nominated, and the number of nominations. So really, it, there is a little bit of a quantitative piece there, but the more important piece is the qualitative of what people wrote and the stories that they told.
That's true, but if we have a rubric with criteria, I would like to see that scored.
Yeah, you had attached a rubric last year.
Yeah. Or why use a rubric if it doesn't pan out into something? So I, I just want to make sure the best people, they're all best people. It's a tough child, but to have some substance to our selection process. And I'm perfectly fine with the Subcommittee, ad hoc Subcommittee, making the decision and recommending to the full board. Great. Okay, moving right along.
So do we need to confirm the ad hoc committee?
It'll be part of the new, it'll be part of the new school committee, because it'll be in May.
It'll be in May. Got it. Okay.
What's the difference between an ad hoc and a Subcommittee?
Subcommittee would be a formal Subcommittee of the School Committee, which would be subject to open meeting law, publishing minutes, the whole thing. We can have ad hoc.
It's ongoing, as opposed to ad hoc being for a particular purpose, not expected to continue on.
And even though there would be three people, three or four people meeting, that.
We don't constitute a quorum of three. If it's, so. Unless it's an established Subcommittee.
All right, any other future agenda items? It's the longest item on the whole agenda. Acknowledgements and closing remarks.
They went home early to do their homework and then get to bed early before going to school tomorrow, but I just wanted to acknowledge the students that came in earlier with Mr. Duffany. I enjoyed meeting with them, the classes, they challenged me. And they're, they're going to challenge us, which I think is fantastic. I told them that this is, what they're asking for is a really big ticket item, so it's not something we can solve quickly, but I just want to thank them for coming out tonight.
And this is, this is where we are building future citizens who have the support and the fourth right to question what they think their government should be doing. So I applaud Mr. Duffany, the school system, and the students for doing. Civics is important, so, that's great.
I just have one acknowledgement. I wanted to acknowledge, this past weekend, I had sent the email out. Candy and Bob Thompson, they purchased the cornhole boards from the wood shop in the high school last year and donated them to the senior of the.
Cal.
Cal, thank you. And they hosted the first senior versus senior cornhole tournament. So I want to, I want to thank them for brainstorming that and bringing the students, as well as the residents that attend the Cal, together. Thank Jeannie Nelson for organizing everything, and it was a wonderful event. I'm sorry to have missed it. I don't know if anyone else made it at all, but.
Who won?
I don't know who won.
They all did.
They're all winners. They all got pizza at the end.
As a member of the senior seniors, root for the team. Motion to adjourn?
I move that we adjourn to our next regular scheduled business meeting of April 30 at 6:00 PM right here in Town Hall.
All in favor? Second, yes? Second, yes, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous, we are adjourned, thank you very much.
It's a good thing. Thank you, Michelle.